I'm sorry, it's not working.
Seriously?
Yep, but that sounds pretty much like a crackin' shit.
No, I'm good. Don't take that in. Wouldn't hurt so nothing hurts you. He'll take care of you, sir. In the business, it's all a hassle.
I forgot.
For three years.
Yeah, that was something I thought.
Oh, no, I think we dropped.
Right now, she just died. They were both in, they never go right out of that story. They were both in the United States. He died. Dreamer was in Vegas.
A lot of names. They were loose.
Yeah.
Isn't?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna go over to you here and really get out of your way, that's okay.
I don't know. They're awfully good.
Well, these guys are beautiful, and I lost my spirit.
Can you leave them?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Can you just try to stay clear, but, I mean... No, because they were continuing this for months. It just was convenient for us. Just okay, let all these students sit in here.
Good thing is, I always carry an extra magazine. You have rocks come out with new creative. So...
So, we are waiting on our committee analysts. Until then, we will not begin, I won't call a roll until we bring the analysts in. But I do think we have a quorum. And with that, we're ready to get started. Is it your bill that has caused quite a stir? So, before we start, we'll let everyone know that my office has this year begun using Twitter and Ustream, which is a live stream, these hearings available. Anyone who's unable to be in a room and find my Twitter page, or click on a link to watch these videos anytime, and also, if you want to go back, if you're extremely masochistic to yourself, want to go back and watch these hearings, you can also watch them in the past. And that said, Eric Burleson on my Twitter account. So, with that, I would be happy to begin hearing testimony on House Bill 1636, representing whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Representative Charlie Davis from 162nd District, Gaspur County. I bring this bill before you because I chair the Veterans Committee, so everything that I do in my life seems like it deals with veterans issue military issues. And the proposal would clarify that a Missouri pharmacist license is not required for pharmacists who are members of the United States Military. We have military bases for Leonard Wood, as well as Wyman Air Force Base, they have clinics on the base. We have seven veterans homes throughout the state. We have a clinic in Mount Vernon, as well as many other clinics. We have a clinic in Springfield fixing to hopefully be built by 2016, as well as a clinic in the city limits of Joplin that will benefit our veterans. And this bill is a little clarification of Senate Bill 106 that passed last year, was dealt with only active duty military personnel. And what this says is that a federal licensed pharmacist is not required to have a Missouri pharmacist license if they're practicing within their scope in part of the federal facility that they're at. The pharmacists were actually the ones that brought this to us, wanted us to clarify it. This is actually something that is going on currently throughout our state, and they just want to codify, put it in statute, that they have the ability to practice that field of medicine, which is dispensing drugs at military bases and federal facilities. And with that, I would be open up to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a pause before we take questions for this witness. We now have official committees, so we will take a roll. Mr. Hurt, please hold on. Representatives Burleson, Elmer, Allen, Anderson, Barr.
Here.
Brown, Carpenter.
Here.
Cornaham.
Here.
Fraker.
Here.
Ram, Franklin.
Here.
Robert.
Here.
Henson, Keeney.
Here.
Crackey.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Liptonhager.
Here.
Mayfield, McCann, Beatty, Moon.
Here.
Muntzle, Nichols.
Present.
Peters.
Present.
Reds.
Here.
Swan.
Here.
Swarrenston.
Here.
Walmer Gray. We do have a quorum present, so we'll now take questions. The testimony that the hurt. Representative Fraker.
Inquired.
Proceed.
Why, why are you asking, I mean, did they currently get licensed? I mean...
No, but what we've seen throughout the years is we have these federally licensed pharmacists that work on military bases, they also work at our veterans clinics, etc., and they may be transient. They may be coming from New York, coming through, working at our VA clinic for a very short period of time, and then moving on to another city. So, this, all it does is if they are, and they cannot present themselves as a licensed, a Missouri licensed pharmacist, but if they're a licensed pharmacist with the federal government, then they have the ability to do that.
Okay, yeah, that helped, I, you know, I was thinking, okay, it's a big deal to get licensed, but if they're moving, I understand that.
And if you need to understand the way that the military works, we have members of the military that are actually dispensing pharmaceuticals at our military bases. They don't have a pharmaceutical license in the state of Missouri, but they are licensed with the federal government, and this is what that's primarily dealing with, those that are in the military that are active duty, as well as retired, and those that are hard working on military bases.
Representative Fraker. Inquired. Proceed.
Thanks for bringing this forward as a pharmacist, I welcome this as well. Is there a similar arrangement in place now for physicians that are working in our own?
I believe dentistry, dieticians, healing arts, nursing, and podiatrists are the ones that actually have this in statute.
But not pharmacists?
That's correct.
Well, thanks for a wonderful question.
Thank you. That's a great question. Any other questions for this witness? Seeing none, I'm excited about this VA clinic moving into Great County, that will be a tremendous help for Great County, and a lot of constituents that have to make long drive into Arkansas. And we certainly don't want to send people into Arkansas, so...
I agree.
So, with that, I'd be happy to, we'll now, we'd like to hear the witnesses in favor of House Bill 1636.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Andy Briscoe, I'm the Legislative Liaison for the Division of Professional Registration. I'd like to thank Representative Davis for bringing this proposal forward. This proposal came from the Board of Pharmacy. As he had mentioned, it was an outgrowth of Senate Bill 106 last year, we didn't want to put any more hurdles in front of some of our licensed professionals. He read through the list of folks who are currently eligible for this, we felt the need for new pharmacists on that, so we support this proposal.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions for this witness? Thank you. I'll hear from the next person who wishes to testify in favor of House Bill 1636. Seeing none, who will not hear testimony against House Bill 1636. Are there any witnesses who wish to testify against the bill? Seeing none, is there anyone here who wishes to testify for informational purposes only? Seeing none, hearing is now closed on House Bill 1636. I hope all bills move this way. We'll now hear testimony on House Bill 1491, Representative Liptonhager. Hope we gave you adequate time to answer.
Whenever you're ready.
Good morning, thank you for hearing my bill today. Representative Liptonhager for the record, the representative of District 1636. Today, I bring before you an advanced practice registered nursing bill. This bill stripped, just very simply, removes nurses with their scope of practice that are APRNs, the nursing anesthetists, and the nurse midwives. Those nurses have had a higher degrees in nursing, and it removes them from having a certificate within the Board of Healing Arts over to the nursing board and with a license in the nursing board. They would still have their total scope of practice, and they would still be under collaborative practice, and they would still have to adhere to all the rules and regulations that they do now. They just would be under the nursing board. And personally, I think that it would make it easier for them to be able to advance their nursing, I don't know how I want to say that, just a minute. I think what I want to say is that I think other nurses would go towards their profession in a higher manner, if they see that the higher nurses are with them on this board. Are there any questions? That's really just still in a very small nutshell.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions for this witness? Representative Fraker.
I wanted to see if anybody else had a question first, since he doesn't appreciate that.
I like that.
Thank you, Representative.
May I?
You know, first I'd like to find an area that you and I might be able to agree on this, and I do think that having the licensure under the Board of Nursing for APRNs, currently there's not a separate license for APRNs, it's just under their nursing license. So, I think it may make some sense, I mean, I think we as a condition, you know, discuss that, it may make some sense for them to have a licensure under the Board of Nursing that's strictly for APRNs. But the area where I get into a little concern is, well, the first thing that concerns me is on page one at the bottom, when it describes the accountability for the APRN, accountable to patients, the nursing profession, the Board of Nursing. And I noticed that there's a complete lack of any mention of the physician that is collaborating with them. Is it this specific intent of the bill to eliminate any accountability between the physician and the nurse? What's the reason why the physician is not mentioned in that sentence?
No, I just think it's because they're in the nursing board now. I think they would still have a collaboration between the physician and the doctor.
The nurse operating on this...
Are you looking at the bill, or are you looking at the substitute, I'm sorry?
I'm looking at the actual bill that was provided, 1491. Is it different, or is there a substitute that eliminates that sentence?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, so, the sentence that says each APRN with accountable patients, the nursing profession, the Board of Nursing for, and then it goes on and on, I mean, that's one concern is...
I think it's just saying what they're, what they do.
Sure, but a nurse operating in statute, I think we have the capacity to say, well, that's really accountable to you. And it kind of ties in with page two, that my biggest concern is that if we put in statute all these things that, you know, APRNs do, it may put doctors who are working with a particular APRN in a difficult spot. You know, take for instance, reading x-rays, I mean, that's one of the things that's described under ordering diagnostic, you know, for your tests, and the teachers would be in statute that could do that. And I would assume it would be an order, interpreted, acted on, because above that it says patient assessment that leads to advanced diagnosis, so they're gonna be able to take in and read and act on x-rays, which in certain circumstances might be, you know, I'm ordering a surgeon, and it takes, sorry, it takes, you know, five years after medical school to give it anymore. So, I may not be comfortable with an APRN right out of training, reading x-rays on various or problems. So, currently, let me just, currently that's described in the agreement that the individual nurse practitioner, the individual doctor arrive at, so it's kind of down at the very local level of that nurse practitioner and that doctor deciding, based on your training and experience in mine, what am I comfortable with you doing on my behalf? But if you put what language you have in place here, in place, that nurse practitioner could just come, look, I'm authorized to do this, I don't care what you think. So, I mean, it seems to me we're eliminating the real grassroots down to the individuals that are working together, letting them kind of work it out. So, what do you say to that?
Well, I think that the intent of this part of the bill is just their scope of practice, and that is within their scope of practice. You just told me that sometimes you do that, I would assume that with your APRN, you probably have an agreement with that person, if you, you know, feel that you have that, and if it's in their scope of practice, it's in their scope of practice.
But currently, that is defined by the doctor and the APRN, they define the degree to which they will be empowered to do all these different tasks, and I think that is by design, we want the individual doctor and the APRN to come know during what about how we're gonna do this, based on what their comfort level is. But if we put it in statute, and let's just take ordering x-rays and interpreting x-rays for a starter, you know, it takes five years to get through a radiology residency, my son is in his second year of radiology residency, he goes through an awful lot of structured training, learning how to read x-rays. So, a doc like me hires a new APRN, I may not be comfortable with her looking at my whole knee x-rays right away, maybe later I would, but this would empower that nurse practitioner, if they really wanted to, you know, I'm not saying that they're, you know, very aggressive about it, but I mean, I think it might, could be, to say, look, I'm thoroughly empowered by the legislation to do this, and you don't have anything to say about it, and plus, it also says that I'm not accountable to you on page one. So, those are my concerns, I'll just rest and let you respond.
Okay, well, I just think what we're trying to do here is put the scope of practice that they can do right now into, so that the nursing board exactly knows that their scope of practice is. And I don't think there's any intent of them trying to leave the doctors out of what they're doing, because the doctors will let them know through his diagnosis, you know, and with the collaboration that he will have with that APRN as to what he wants them to do, or what he doesn't want them to do. This is strictly saying, okay, this is the scope of practice that an APRN is allowed to do at this time. Now, if you have a contract with a doctor, and that doctor says, you know, you've only been out of school for a year, and I would rather go through the x-rays with you, then I would think that that person would comply with that. It's simply a matter of putting their scope of practice into the Board of Nursing. It's, I don't think it's anything more than that.
Are there further questions for this witness? Seeing none, who now I can hear your first witness in favor of the House Bill 1491. And what I, I respect for both sides, what I think I'll do for this bill is we're gonna take testimony, we're gonna alternate testimony, so we take questions in favor and the questions against.
Thank you, committee members. My name is Nancy Zane, I'm a family nurse practitioner by trade. I was here last week when we had the benefit of hearing 1481, and in the spirit of how that committee hearing went, I thought I would try to keep my testimony short and sweet, however I can see we're already off to a gangbuster start on our time. I first want to take time to clarify, based on the line of questioning we just had, that there are actually two chapters that speak to the nurse practitioners. There's chapter 334, which precedes chapter 335, so this bill is in reference to chapter 335. Chapter 334 is, what, 1481, referenced last week, that was around collaborative practice. We're not taking away the collaborative practice, so that collaborative practice still exists. What we're simply trying to do here is define that scope. So, outside of all the barriers that we have around collaborative practice, yes, the physicians and the entities at the core level of the practice where they practice can determine any additional components that they want within that scope of practice, or within that collaborative agreement. We're just simply defining the scope of practice for entities as a baseline, within the state, above and beyond that, the physician and the entity can determine that, you know, more specifically. You know, I would just like to take time to thank this committee for hearing our bills, and for hearing all of our bills over the last so many years. I will honestly say it was hard to engage this year with the legislative process once more, because every year we come with the tiniest symbol of the bills to try to improve things for the nurse practitioner profession, which is a legal profession, we're not debating a profession that's not legal, this is legal in all 50 states, we have very collaborative practice agreements, independent practice authorities, full practice authorities all across this great country. And yet, in this particular state, we have the hardest time even moving the needle in the tiniest bit. So, we say it's a collaborative state, but yet we can't collaborate on joint primarization of these rules, and even move through areas in the tiniest bit. So, in the spirit of this bill, we're simply asking that we have some clear definition for our scope of practice, and that is all we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions for this witness? Representative Fraker.
I'm waiting to see if there was anyone else who had one.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for your testimony.
I have a question that I don't think has ever been asked in previous years when we're discussing this. And what brings it to mind is, there's a section where we talk about specialty population training, ordering treatments consistent with specialty population training, including, it goes on. The question is this, let's say that a nurse practitioner works for the cardiologist for five years. And then leaves the cardiologist and goes to work for a family physician. Would it be your opinion, and do you believe that this statute, if it were enacted, would allow that APRN to continue to practice cardiology even though her collaborating physician would not be a board-certified cardiologist anymore?
I believe that is a question that we could probably answer outside of the setting directly one-on-one. I would love the chance to pull in some subject matter experts that have, you know, responsible-
Do you have an opinion personally on that?
Do I have an opinion personally on that? I actually have not given that any thought, but I would be happy to give it some thought and give you a thought on that later.
Thank you.
You're next to Franklin, sorry.
It's okay.
Proceed.
Have you been through a residency program?
I have not. I have been through clinical training, yes.
Clinical training, what does that mean?
Uh, there are clinical hours associated with a nurse practitioner training.
How many hours is that?
For my particular school that I went through, it was, without looking at the records, I believe it was about 1,300 hours.
1,300, and what are you, what was that in?
I thought it was in family practice.
Family practice, okay. So last week going through the other bill, and you mentioned it today, which made me think about it, is kind of Missouri, there was a graph that was distributed that kind of showed that Missouri was an outlier, that we were more difficult, et cetera, et cetera. I went to the APRN website and it has a very nice graph there, and I distributed it by email to the members, which shows that we're at about par with 25 other states, that we're not really an outlier. I mean, that's what the website says.
If you look for just the term collaborative practice, correct, Missouri would not be viewed as an outlier, but you have to look within the barriers of that collaborative practice. So the other states that are showing having a collaborative practice agreement are simply stating that they require one. They leave every other definition of that collaborative practice to the physician and to the NP to define. They do not put in mileage restrictions, they do not have chart reviews, they do not have onsite visits as part of that definition of collaborative practice. It truly is a collaborative practice agreement, arrangement between that NP and that physician that they themselves determine. It is not determined in statute or legislation.
Yeah, that's correct. It is not established in statute or legislation. It's left up to them. In addition, I included a graph of the United States that showed independent practices for APRNs from the website as well. And it shows that really west of us, there is more of that. And I think you can understand that those are probably poorer and rural states where they have placed nurse practitioners out there probably via telecommunication, and they're in conjunction with, particularly I know in New Mexico, that they are really hardwired into the University of New Mexico. So they do have an unwritten collaborative practice, basically, between those two. So I also watched, looked at this website and it says that what they have identified as a problem with new nurses, basically, coming out of practice, is that they are today seeing, and I'll just copy this, read this, sicker patients increasing with their increasingly complex health settings. And they're saying that the impact of that is more than 40% report making medication errors. And so I see in the bill that you all want to be able to prescribe medication therapy and utilized samples.
Correct.
So that is really a kind of a huge red flag to me, is when they're leaving the education that they have, if they're not really equipped to do that, and then they're asking to be able to widen that scope of practice. Without that, I think in a way this kind of null and voids the collaborative practice because it's stating in statute what you can do. It also says that because of the stress, the stress of moving into fields that they don't feel like they've been really trained to do, that many of them just leave the field and go, excuse me, and go into areas that are less stressful. And that decreases our population too. So I think that speaks to, I think what we should be doing really is affirming that collaborative practice through statutes, to giving the authority to treat patients to the physicians. So I get back to the residency question, because they put together a model then, and again, I emailed this to the members of the committee, on how to help nurses move from this area of feeling like they could not and had not, based on the 40% errors in prescribing, move to be more competent, and they recommend a residency program, which is, in fact, then what a physician must go through. So that speaks to the value of a medical school education and years of residency that it takes to provide primary care. My husband's a primary care physician. And the things that he sees in the field, without the education that he had, he would not be able to help those people right there. So I started, I started out with the concerns that I have about being able to pass out samples or be able to prescribe when the error rate is so high.
So I understand your concern. I would say that these are things we're already doing, we're just simply looking to rectify the language from the Board of Medicine to the Board of Nursing. You reference nurses, so for point of clarification, there are nurses and there are nurse practitioners.
Exactly, but nurse practitioners start out being nurses, correct?
We start out being nurses, correct. And almost every nurse, anyone who graduates from any program will tell you, when they graduate, doesn't matter what field it is, will tell you, I didn't know that I, that I don't know everything, you know?
But it's such a huge problem that a national model has been developed to address that problem, and it's acknowledged from the APRN website.
I can't speak to the article because I haven't seen it, but I would love to read it and would love to take a look at it. I think anything that broke this education, no one's going to argue that. No one's going to say, you know, none of us want to say NP is better than physicians or physicians are better than NP. This is really not about that, and that's what's so unfortunate about these hearings, is that it always becomes an NP versus physician battle, and that's not-
Well, it's really a training battle. It is what are you trained and what are you trained to do?
Correct.
What are you trained to do?
And we are trained very well.
And what are you, because you've been put, placed in a collaborative practice, then what are you beginning to desire to do, which you may not be trained to do? And I think for healthcare in the United States, we really demand, in fact, 77% of people who are polled say that they want to see a physician. And if they're not, that they clearly want that to be known to them, that they are not seeing a physician for their care.
I understand that, and I appreciate that.
So, you know, and I think in addition to that, you know, the practice of medicine is not in statute, exactly everything that physicians do. And so perhaps if we did, moved in that direction, then what is left can be put into the collaborative practice to define. You would feel more comfortable knowing than what you're able to do.
So we're not looking to put into statute everything that the NP can do, we're looking to provide the baseline definition, and we are looking to keep that separate of the collaborative practice agreement, because the collaborative practice agreement and chapter 334, which would precede this chapter, which means collaborative practice has to exist for-
As long as we have a collaborative practice statute. But when we don't have a collaborative practice statute, then this opens the door.
And I think at some point, if we were to not have a collaborative practice agreement in the state, then 335 would be reexamined at the time as well. Right now, we can't even get the barriers removed from the current collaborative practice date by kind of doubt that we're heading-
Well, we passed a bill last session that hasn't gone into effect yet, so we don't even know if the telemedicine and, you know, the mileage restrictions are going to be something that satisfies the nurse practitioners since they're back again, the new request.
And the mileage restrictions might be directly dependent upon everybody being able to have access to the technology, and I think that's our challenge. There are areas where people will have access to that technology, so telemedicine's going to be fantastic. There are areas that we still have not mentioned yet. But thank you for the-
Well, that's true, you know, it's true in the United States.
Right.
And so again, 77% of people want to see the primary care or see the doctors, and then they have no problem after that with the doctors establishing the protocol and that being carried out with the physician extenders right down the line. I think that's a great model, and we can see it's the most effective model for healthcare delivery.
I understand. I think everybody has a role in patient care. Thank you for that. I would say that, you know, you can pull studies, depending on who's writing the article.
It's your group.
Depends on which way the study goes, if you understand. If you understand. I haven't seen it, so I can't-
Okay. Thank you. We'll take the next question, Representative Swann.
To inquire, Mr. Chairperson.
Proceed.
Thank you. Thank you for appearing today, and thank you for your knowledge and your expertise in providing patients. Just a back-to-the-bill language itself, a question for you. Please describe what the intent of the bill is, and also indicate of those items in the bill language itself, if there are those items that you currently do not practice.
I would actually ask that we move on with other testimony, because there are other people who are prepared to speak more specifically to the bill.
That would be fine. We can get to that at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for me? Thank you, Committee members, I appreciate the time.
Are there any other questions for this witness? Any other questions for this witness? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. Now, for your testimony again, House Bill 1491.
Good morning, or afternoon, Chairman Gerson, I'm Dr. James Wolfe. I'm a retired otolaryngologist. I practiced for over 30 years in Springfield, Missouri. I'm also president of the Missouri State Medical Association. We have some of the same concerns that Representative Frederick and Franklin discussed earlier, so I won't go over those in great detail. But I will say that if you look at this bill as well as 1481, which has already been referenced in this committee, they are designed for failure of the collaborative practice agreement. Because basically, what this bill does is it decreases the inclination for physicians and nurse practitioners to willingly work together. As pointed out earlier, there would be a conflict potentially between what the bill says the nurse practitioner can do and what the physician would be willing to have the nurse practitioners do. Since that would come to a loggerhead, one of two things would happen. Either they would finally agree to disagree, or they would not have a collaborative agreement, and as a consequence, then the nurse practitioners would come to us and say, we can't work with this present situation, we need total independence. So as I see it, both 1481 and 1491 are an attempt for failure of the collaborative practice agreement. With regards to the medication therapy protocols that have been referenced, this has only been in existence here in Missouri between pharmacists and physicians for about four or five years. And I find it a little premature to say automatically then that the nurse practitioner should have the same authority, since we haven't really seen how well it's worked. I too have a problem with the fact that the nurse practitioners are not accountable to their collaborating physician. Our representative Frederick already has mentioned that, so I'm not going to go into any more detail there. The other issue I have, though, is if the nurse practitioners say that they are just identifying their scope of practice, would it not be more logical to have a substitute bill that addresses that issue and at the same time defines what the practice of medicine is? Instead of doing it piecemeal, make it logical? This bill, basically, as I mentioned earlier, covers the contract of collaboration and basically wipes it out. So the physicians of Missouri, particularly the members that I represent, are adamantly opposed to this.
Testimony is concluded.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have questions for this witness? Yes, Representative Brooks.
To inquire, Mr. Chair.
Proceed.
Thank you, Doctor, for coming in today. One question, help me a little bit with the collaboration agreement. Does the, does a physician say, hey, look, this is what you're going to do? Obviously, this is what you're expected to do, correct? So if the, if the NP goes beyond that, what's the next recourse in action?
Having never had an NP, I was retired before nurse practitioners became common in specialties, I really can't answer that. There may be somebody else that has experience with nurse practitioners to answer that.
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, obviously if you had, let's just say, an architect that worked for you and got your patients ready or whatever, and they did something they weren't supposed to, wouldn't you just fire them?
Probably not necessarily fire them, but you would at least reprimand them.
Exactly.
There's got to be a gradation.
There would be some recourse as far as, you know, you did this wrong, this is beyond what you were supposed to do, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
The only difference is that if in fact the item that she did that you felt uncomfortable with is now codified, she could come back and say, you can't fire me because it says in the law that I can do it.
I think you can fire anybody for any reason in the state of Missouri. I mean, there's probably, I agree, there's probably going to be some litigation after that, but I think, you know, I mean, that's all objective, that's why we get to listen to all this work and testimony. So thank you, though, I appreciate you coming on.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for this witness? Representative Franklin.
Proceed. Thank you for your testimony. As president of the Missouri State Medical Association, you've come in contact with a great many physicians across the state. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And you have discussions with them about this topic on a regular basis.
Yes, I do.
So the fact that you haven't really had a nurse practitioner because that wasn't really common in the specialties when you were in practice, it would be no surprise to anyone, but the fact that you're here representing that this is not a good idea is not based only on your sole experience, but on your communications with physicians across the state with whom you are in constant contact or frequent contact.
That's correct.
You know, I noted earlier too, that the first witness in favor of this bill noted that her clinical hour of training were 1,300 hours. And you will be familiar with the relatively recent change in the graduate medical education requirements, that physicians can no longer work in excess of 80 hours per week.
That's correct.
And I have two of my children that are in residency programs now, and I can tell you that that is a norm, the 80 hours per week. And I think sometimes they may fudge that a little bit, be beyond that, but I'm sure their programs are trying to maintain, you know, within those standards. But if you take 1,300 hours and divide it by 80 hours a week, that's 16 weeks. And how long is a typical residency for otolaryngology? How long was yours?
Mine was five years, it's now six.
So that's quite a bit more than 16 weeks. And for family medicine, it's three years of residency beyond medical school.
As I understand it, yes.
So, you know, I heard some laughter or a ripple through the audience when you mentioned that nurse practitioners came upon the scene after you had retired from practice. But this is a serious issue that we're discussing here, and there is a substantial difference in training. And it's my impression, and tell me if you believe that the constituents, your physician members feel this way too, I think currently, it's working well. I think currently, it's working well. I have nothing to say about the way the collaboration between nurse practitioners and physicians is going on now. I should call that out a little bit. I think there should be better, more quality interaction between the physician and the nurse practitioner, I think there should improve that. But I think, in general, the reason that the physician community is opposing, it seems to oppose nurse practitioners, we're not opposed to nurse practitioners, we're just opposed to ignoring the training gap. Would you say that's a fair statement?
Yes, as someone once said to me, "Education matters." And I don't know how you can cram five or six years of training into sixteen weeks and still be adequately trained.
But yet, at the same time, they're very valuable members of the healthcare team, upon which many physicians rely heavily, and there's a good deal of professional respect among them. So, I don't want the nurse practitioners in the room to get the idea that the medical community somehow, you know, has a war on nurse practitioners. No, it's just that the concept of drastically changing the relationship that has been carved out over the years is something we want to go very cautiously. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for this witness? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. We'll now hear your testimony in favor of House Bill fourteen ninety-one.
It's just about afternoon, so good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Chairman and committee members, thank you for allowing me to speak to the committee today. My name is Margaret Ben, I'm an advanced practice registered nurse. I've been a nurse for thirty-six years, I've been an advanced practice nurse for nineteen years, and before that, I was a cardiovascular clinical specialist. Currently, I teach at Saint Louis University School of Nursing in the Nurse Practitioner Program, and I see patients in the housing authority in the city of St. Louis in the Parkview Apartments in collaboration with the Institute of Family Medicine. So, today, I'm here to speak in support of, and I'm gonna read my testimony so I can stay on track, because otherwise, I kind of talk a lot. Today, I'm here to speak in support of HB fourteen ninety-one, which relates to APRNs scope of practice. Currently, there is no language in Chapter three thirty-five, the Board of Nursing Statute, that governs APRNs and the nursing. The proposed language would create a separate license for nurse practitioners and outline their scope of practice and statute. It would recognize the scope of APRN practice and its boundaries.
I'm gonna ask if you would like to submit the written testimony, that would be wonderful. You traveled to be here, and we want to hear from you.
Okay.
And so, we can always read your testimony.
Do you have my testimony? Okay, I will.
You can distribute it. But now that you're here, we want to hear, we want to hear your input, your heart, and let us know.
I agree with him.
It's okay.
Okay.
We are not, most people in this committee are not licensed professionals, so we appreciate your input.
Okay. Well, what is it gonna tell you that is to put in statute what our scope is? And it's just to clarify what we do, because I don't think that you all really understand all that we have been trained to do and all of our education. I know that you think that we don't have adequate education and training, but we're not practicing to the breadth and the scope and the extent that physicians are. We are practicing doing primary care, for the most part, eighty-five percent of us do primary care, and for eighty-five percent of us, we are practicing doing diagnosis, assessment, diagnosis, providing care, looking at labs, we're doing all the things that are outlined in this here. Our training focuses on all of that. When you come into a nurse practitioner program, you have to have a four-year degree in a Bachelor of Science in Nursing, so you've been in nursing for four years, and then you go on to practice for a while as an actual nurse, you're in practice providing care. Most people come back to the nurse practitioner program after eight to ten years in practice, that's sixteen to twenty thousand hours of practice. And then you come into the nurse practitioner program, and it actually, in our program, it's about six hundred and fifty hours of clinical time in the program, but realize that our students in the program are there for three years, and they're all continuing to work full-time.
So, where was the reference of sixty weeks? What is, so is it three years of school?
Our program is a three-year program.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, within that program, it's six hundred hours, is that correct?
Within that program, to qualify to sit for your boards, you have to do five hundred hours, but most programs do six hundred and fifty and some as much as seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty. It depends on the specialty, because we have adult gerals, we have families, we have pediatric, we have psychiatric, we have midwives, so it depends on the specialty that you're in, that the average of all of them is about six hundred and fifty hours of clinical time with patients.
Is that a full-time, is that full-time? Three years of full-time?
Do you know, there's no physical way to do it full-time, so students try.
Okay.
Doesn't happen very often, because you take about six to nine hours a semester, and then you have to do about a hundred and fifty to two hundred and twenty-five hours. And so, it's very hard to do that and work full-time, which is what most of them do.
I see, okay.
Okay. So, the education that we have, and we have anatomy and physiology, we have advanced pharmacology, the advanced pharmacology we have with the mentees at our school, we sit in the same classroom, well, not anymore, there were so many nurse practitioners, we had to split up, but the same faculty, same content. Advanced health assessment, clinical decision-making, we go through the same assessment and diagnostic skills and information. We do very detailed histories and physicals, looking for risks, doing all health promotion and screening. We order tests that are very specific, we have to follow guidelines and standards, we follow the exact same guidelines and standards. And so, we have all that information, we do, and then we go back to the nursing lab, health promotion and disease prevention, that's key to what nurse practitioners do, that's what makes it different. We do things, our education is a little bit different, we take a different approach because we're looking holistic, and we're looking at health promotion, we're looking at education, looking at the whole person and not a medical model. So, we like being nurses. We take many of the same classes, we do many of the same skills, but we don't have the breadth. So, when I see patients, I see commonly occurring chronic stables and acute self-limited diagnoses. I can't see everything, I have the limits, and that's what scope we define, is the limits that I have. So, I can't see, I can't do orthopedic surgery, I can't see the complex things, that's outside my scope. I can diagnose basic things, I can diagnose diabetes, hypertension, osteoarthritis, osteoporosis, I can look at ears and tell you if there's an infection there and treat it, act very well, as well as anybody else, outcome statistics show that. I can look at throats and burr and everything else, I mean, we can do a lot of things. The patients that might practice off of, with them in the housing authority, they all have to have disabilities, primarily the disability is psych-mental health, so it's just a tiny, a focal and things like that, but then additionally, they have hypertension, diabetes and those kinds, and we're trained in all those. Now, do I collaborate with other people? Yes, I have a psych-mental health person, I do the primary care, and they do the psychiatric. Do I need a cardiologist sometimes? Most definitely. You know, if somebody's got something, I can order the test and then refer on, but do you know how hard it is for my physicians to get into specialty? Difficult. So, yes, we're adequately prepared and adequately trained, and why didn't we go to medical school? Well, I've been a nurse. I come from a family of seven kids that were very active, and we spent a ton of time in the emergency room growing up, and honestly, I saw doctors, I saw nurses, I saw technicians, I liked the nurse. She was there all the time, from beginning to end, she talked to us, she comforted us, she gave us the care, and she was there, and we came back. I liked the nursing home, I liked the holistic approach, I liked being able to see patients with their families in the surrounding, in the corporate depths of your care, and see how it affects them. Do I ultimately do the same thing? A lot of the times, I do, I'm doing the same pharmacology, I'm doing the same guideline, basic care, gardening with dog water, and drink eight to ten glasses of water a day and eat this balanced diet, but I'm also giving them like mental health and holistic approach that physicians don't always do, not all of them, some are great with it, but not all of that is the nursing approach. So, I like being a nurse, and I think we do good in what we do, and I think we know our limits. When I have students, we drill them, we drill them over and over, what are the red flags, when do you refer, what are your limits? They have to know that. They also have to know where to find the diagnosis, where to find the standard, how to know how to diagnose, and what they have to do to justify everything that they do, because for God's sake, we are justified and scrutinized more than any other provider. People are watching for us to mess up, to make us take, to be a statistic. You know, and I know what residency is, my husband is also a physician, he's an orthopedic surgeon, we went through tons of them, he even did a fellowship. But I'm not practicing orthopedic surgery in fellowship hands, I'm practicing basic primary care for commonly occurring things that get mundane to some primary care. You know, on primary care diagnosis, diabetes, I can diagnose diabetes, you refer the physician over frequently to a nurse, or a nurse practitioner, to do all this, because they don't want to spend the time going through diets, how to count carbs, what you need to eat, what kind of exercising you do, what grade is that? We incorporate that into our care. So, different approach, different education, same outcomes.
I'm gonna ask you to drop the script.
To inquire, Mr. Chairman. Proceed. Thank you. I'll post the same question to you in a little bit different way. I graduated from nursing school forty-four years ago, I understand what it's like to go through nursing education, I applaud all the nurses in the department, sticking with it, it's not an easy program. Regarding the bill itself, once again, I want to rein us into the bill.
Okay.
It would seem there are two pieces of the bill, one which places the APRNs under the Board of Nursing lawsuit purposes. The other items on Pages two and three of the substitute bill go into detail regarding scope. Would you please indicate if any of those items that are listed on Pages two and three of this bill are not current approved practice in your collaborative agreements?
No, those are all things that are currently in my collaborative agreement. Ordering, I think, what I was looking for, I'm going, looking down, consulting, ordering, diagnostic tests, performing tests and procedures, palliative and life care, advanced counseling, do a lot of that, health education, and actually, now we're in the coaching, if they're eligible. Ordering, we do all these things, and we're trained to do all these things, and this is, if you go to the website that you want to, you'll see that there are standard scopes, and these are all part of that, yes, I believe we do all of this. And I think it, I know it's all in my current collaborative practice.
Thank you. Representative Franklin.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, to inquire.
Proceed.
There we go. Thank you for your testimony, I think you've done a great job laying out what nurses do. Yeah, I think you've done a great job of saying that, and you've also, I can tell just by your demeanor, that you're easy to work with, and that there's probably a lot of physicians who enjoy being in the collaborative agreement with you. You know, they can count on you, they have seen over the years that you know how to execute what they've asked you to do, or what the protocol is, you know, you've laid out for us that your education is not a medical school education, your residency is not a residency, you've done a great job with that, and I think that you have demonstrated the value of the collaborativeness, because of who you are and the way that you take care of patients, your physician has said, "This is what you're able to do." They are comfortable, they are confident, confident with you, I guess, you know, I just really want to thank you, because you've laid it out perfectly. You've put together how things should be, and perhaps that's the question that's really before us, is as physicians and as nurses, how can we, I think, be sure that each other is able to practice to the fullness of their extent? And you have to have the physicians who is trained, not physicians, sometimes we talk about physicians and we look at a person or a character or something, rather than saying it is the practice of medicine, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the practice of nursing, and the education that you've had, and the practice of medicine, and how those operate differently, but in conjunction with each other. And when I hear you talk, I think about the county nurses that we used to have, that would visit the families and see what's going on in the family, you know, who needs to see the doctor, who can we take care of here within the home, or with a few simple steps. So, I don't know whether this was really, you know, and you also have a very calmness about your presence, and I think you brought a calmness to this room. And I'm with the chairman, I think, you know, I'm glad you didn't read your testimony, because you've done such a great job of articulating why collaboration is necessary, and why the physician should have the ability to say, "I am competent in allowing this nurse to do these things, and I'm not with this nurse." And to be able to spell that out, and to keep, I think, the integrity of that collaborative agreement is to have a collaborative, maybe, legislation that we have now, and maybe we need to work on that just a little bit. As I said before, we passed something last year, that hasn't gone into effect yet, so we don't even know what the results of that are. Once again, you've done a great job, and thank you, and I think you've made some good points for keeping collaboration going. Thank you.
And we're not taking collaboration away, we just want to define scope, we just want in nursing statutes, and the reason it is beneficial in nursing statute is because the nursing, nursing, nursing board of nursing is there to protect workers as much as anybody. Right now, if there's a complaint to the Board of Nursing about a nurse practitioner, they can't do anything about it. You have to go back to that collaborative practice agreement, and still they have no oversight for that. So, putting scope within nursing statute would give nursing the ability to say, "This is what a nurse practitioner can do," and it's not there right now, and also follow up, and do follow-up.
Representative Peters.
The patient.
Proceed.
Thank you. All right, all right. I just have a question, and you can just touch on it, like, can you tell me the standards that are currently used, should a patient bring a Fergens lawsuit against a nurse practitioner? What are the standards that are currently used when there are being no scope in the statute currently?
And so, it would go back to the physician, because right now, it's whatever the physician delegates in the collaborative practice agreement, and where the collaborative practice agreement may want to stay, I'm not sure if I was a physician, I want to be liable for something my nurse practitioner did. So, this would move scope under nursing and make nursing responsible.
Thank you very much, answer my question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for this witness? Seeing none, we'll now hear another witness, who is testifying against House Bill fourteen ninety-one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Shannon Hawk, and I represent the Missouri Society of Eye Physicians and Surgeons. Spoke against this bill in the Senate on Monday, and tried to keep my testimony brief, and just said that basically, the Missouri Society of Eye Physicians and Surgeons always testifies, you can always count on it, we testify against anything that we think expands scope of practice. Didn't say much more than that, then unfortunately, the Senate allowed rebuttal, and someone came up after me and said, "No, this bill doesn't expand scope of practice." So, I just want to explain to you why I think it does. On the first page, Dr. Frederick asked about it earlier, there is no accountability to a physician. So, if this bill, if the intention of the bill is to define scope of practice, then I think it is extremely important that it be mentioned in there, that there is some accountability to a physician. Now, earlier, when Dr. Frederick asked about it, the witness responded that there is a separate chapter that deals with collaborative practice, but then when the last witness was up, and the last- But then when the last witness was up and the legislator asked about the various criteria listed in there, she said, yes, those are all things that we do within the scope of the collaborative practice. So, kind of doesn't jive. So I think if you are going to talk about scope of practice, it's very important to have somewhere in this bill that there is some accountability to a physician.
Thank you for your testimony. I wanted to, we had a question from Twitter. I was going to ask it, it's from actually a local physician in my community, who wanted to ask how this might impact the team, the team environment that's leading to a team environment, physicians working within, working with other healthcare professionals, how this might be able to impact that physician, that team environment?
That, that may likely be a question for someone else. I don't think I'm prepared for the Twitter question, but I would say that I think with regard to collaboration between physicians and nurses, if there's nothing in there that explicitly says that a nurse has to, you know, has some accountability to a physician, what is the physician's incentive to participate in the collaborative agreement?
Yeah, I think it's a good response.
I don't, I heard someone say money behind you, and I don't think that's true because the physician, the physician is not going to do it when, when there are, you know, insurance and there are other things involved, there's potential lawsuits, I don't think that's going to drive them to do it.
Thanks. Are there any questions? Representative Peters.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. I'm just curious, we just heard a testimony from a licensed nurse practitioner. If this, if the scope, if it's into the scope into statute, if it's going to protect the doctor, what's the problem? I, I really don't understand whether the doctor is being included into the, into the language or being held accountable to the doctor, is being included into the language or not. What is the problem with taking the burden of a lawsuit off of the doctor and putting it in the hands of the individual who was actually seeing the patient?
Why don't, why don't we just go ahead and do a couple of bills that, that define what physicians can do and what nurses can do? Why don't we just do that? Would that be a problem?
It probably would. It probably would, but I, I agree with it. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Are there any further questions for this witness? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony. We will now hear another testimony in favor of House Bill 1491.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Leanne Chilton, I represent BJC Healthcare and as most of you know, BJC Healthcare is one of the largest healthcare systems in Missouri within the country. So we have both doctors and nurses in the fourth line of BJC. In fact, we have over 9,000 nurses at BJC and we have over 200 doctors just near BJC Medical Group. So this is an important issue, right? I mean, we all want to reform healthcare, we all want to make sure that people have access to what they need, when they need it. Some very good questions were asked here. When BJC got involved in this discussion, it was because it seemed to us that we had polar opposites, right? We had docs on one side, nurses on the other, and folks weren't coming together with a solution, right? We just had to just say no. This year, I think we have a lot more compromises happen and candidly, hearing some of the questions, perhaps there's more to be done with 1491. I am not clinical, so while I may represent 27,000 people, I do not, I cannot answer your clinical questions, but I can certainly point to a lot of people who could. Now, we believe very strongly that right now, there is no definition of what an advanced practice nurse is, right? It says what they are, it says they have to have an advanced degree, but it doesn't say who they are. We also have a significant amount of collaborative agreements. We don't want to get rid of those collaborative agreements. Many of you have brought up the fact that the collaborative agreements have a lot more prescriptive information in it, right? So if I'm in a collaboration with a advanced nurse who's been trained in gerontology, let's say, not, or he's not, been trained in cardiac, so I'm not going to check the boxes that say that's what I want them to do, right? The collaboration is all about us providing services to people when they need it, how they need it. I think 1491, we can talk about a lot of things and while many, many surveys will come out and say, I don't like politicians, but I like my politician, we've heard that before, right? When you go to collaborative agreements, mostly you will see the physician and the advanced nurse agree with each other. They, they have a good working relationship and that's what we want on behalf of patients. We want them to work in concert with each other. Really good questions about a physician training. Physician training is different than advanced nurse training. It's different. We think what 1491 does is provide the definition that's sorely missing right now in the law, but the collaborative practice will remain. We will not, and that's, that's candidly why BJC is willing and able and happy to support this legislation. We are open to any compromises or any changes that folks think are missing, do you have clarity reasons? Happy to do that. We've offered that up and we'll offer it again. And I think behind the scenes, there are some discussions going on and we'd like to be part of that. Can I stand right, you can answer any questions?
Thank you for your testimony, Representative Cora. Proceed.
Having a BJC hospital in my district, are you, does that hospital have any issues right now with the stall in place?
With the current law?
Any issues with current law right now? That hospital?
All of BJC would say that we would like to see the APRN legislation through because of that definition. It doesn't eliminate any of the collaborative agreements that are already out there or will continue to be out there, nor does it modify the current law of collaboration, which was important to BJC.
But, the St. Peters one, is that anything you're?
I mean, I think that this is refinement of current practices and an acknowledgement of the training, the advanced training that a nurse has when they get to that level.
Representative, I think you're going to have a hard time getting a, and I know where you're going, but I think you're asking a question that would be difficult for her to answer. It probably would, I would, if I were, I would not advise her to answer the question.
I'm not a lawyer either, so this is a problem, right?
It makes sense. I think it's a good question, but I don't think that.
I'd be happy to talk with you offhand.
Are there any further questions for this witness? Seeing none.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now hear a testimony against House Bill 1491.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Mr. Cora, it's very important, society, it's our society, Dallas is our society, and we're going to be a position. Appreciate your time today, I know we've met with a sponsor as well and I, I think there are a lot of things in this legislation that we can work with and in places we can go. I, I think there are other things that the language may have broader intentions than actually listed in the bill. Specifically, under current law, a physician right now can delegate anything to a nurse practitioner. That's within their skill, training and level of competence. And so, one question I would ask the committee is, if this bill does not expand the scope, then what are the current things that a nurse practitioner may want to do or perform that may not be listed in this? Specifically, we, in terms of anesthesia, the current law requires physicians supervision when administering anesthesia. That's something we want to make sure stays intact. And I'm not saying this bill necessarily appeals it, but we also have the question of whether or not it does and whether or not it's stated. One of the most concerning words in legislation is the word "but not limited to." And within that, in defining whether advanced practice registered nurses, there is the definition of "but not limited to" in terms of the nurse's scope. And so, while this bill doesn't list diagnosing cancer, doesn't list, you know, certain types of surgery, a variety of things, I know that may sound extreme, but is there anything in this bill that would limit that? And so, again, as we discussed last, last week, I think there are a lot of good things already going on within the collaborative practice agreement and, and we're concerned that without this, you remove the input and participation from eight physicians and one non-physician who sit on the Board of Healing Arts or Board of Medicine and go through a lot of those procedures and whose job it is to spend 10 to 20 hours a week on patient safety standards. And so, with practice of nursing and practice of medicine, again, as we discussed last week and have the discussion earlier in the Senate, there's a lot of things that bleed together. And so, there's certain procedures that may be in that gray line and that's why we want to make sure that collaborative practice stays intact. And the last question I would ask is, and again, I'm not suggesting that it does, but necessarily more posing the question of whether or not it requires a collaborative practice agreement. What would, under this law, prohibit a nurse practitioner from performing some of these procedures that, that without a collaborative practice agreement, without physicians supervision, and being completely accountable to the Board of Healing Arts, with the Board of Nursing, and not having any input from Board of Healing Arts whose job is to oversee patient safety and state? So, that being said, we are committed as a sponsor, I think there are some things in here we certainly understand and, and think there are some other good forces we build, but obviously it still has some debates.
Thank you. Are there any questions for this witness? And I would encourage you to, we always welcome to try to work with sponsors to supervise the substitution of these cases. I heard testimony in favor of House Bill 1491.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Bruce Willis. It looks like you have present today on both sides of the argument, physicians on one side and nurses on the other. I'd like to introduce another point of the argument, and that is the consumer. As a consumer of healthcare, I'd like to just make one comment. I, I support autonomy for physicians and nurses to practice to the full extent of their skill, ability and knowledge. And I think that's all that the scope of practice does. There's nothing that prevents, other than ethics, a family practitioner from performing brain surgery, provided you. And so, why would I expect them to not perform brain surgery, skill, their ethics and the knowledge in the marketplace? I think for advanced practice nurses, that's the same thing that limits them. So as a consumer of healthcare, I want to be able to go to my choice of advanced practice nurse, whether or not they are under a collaborative practice agreement. And so I, I really am far, if it takes an amendment, but I'd be far, full autonomy for advanced practice nurses. As a consumer, I would also recommend one other rule change. To really serve the consumer, the public, I think the Board of Nursing and the Board of Healing Arts should be made up 100% of public members. If they, if they, if you provide ex officio members in the industry to advise the public board, but just like the Public Service Commission or any other entity that serves the public, it should be made up of public members with advice from ex officio members. That really concludes my testimony.
Thank you for the testimony. Are there any questions for this witness? Seeing none, thank you. We'll now hear testimony against House Bill 1491. We have 15 more minutes for this bill.
As long as I can, I'm staying quiet. Members of the committee, my name is Brad Bates, I'm a registered lobbyist for the Missouri Association of Osteopathic Physicians and Surgeons. And, we're going to go on record in opposition of this bill. There are some good things to it and a compliment to Representative Lichtenberger and extend a hand that we're willing to work with, with her on this bill. The licensure for the nurses, I, I get that, that's a good thing to have the APRNs with their separate licensure, it makes sense. I think our main issue is basically page one, line 13 and 14, when it talks about who the nurse practitioner is accountable to, being the nursing board, her, and her patients. If the collaborative practice, which is section 334, is ever abolished, and there's rules in there, there's law that has been submitted right now, 1481, that abolishes the collaborative practice for the most part, it gets all the rules that have been promulgated to this point, if you remove all those rules, then wouldn't 1491 supersede anything in the eyes of the law? And that being that now an APRN would be reportable to the Board of Nursing and to her patients. So, we think a physician should be included in that equation since they are accountable to them. I take my hat off to the, to the nurse practitioners that testified beforehand, I have no question in my mind that they're caring, good, educated and medically able individuals. And they're doing all the things that are currently on page two, all that's the practice they're doing and I think they admitted to the fact, we, we're not looking to curtail that.